We guess so. I want to say the pledge.
Good evening. Welcome to a cold night in Michigan. Commissioner?
Kramer.
Kramer. Yes, that's who I asked. Commissioner Kramer, would you say the pledge and the lead is please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer?
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Present.
Commissioner Rexrode is absent with prior notice. Chairman Wessel?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Ross?
Here.
Commissioner Alguier?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
Thank you. We have, the clerk's office has given us seven sets of minutes. Anybody have any minutes to approve tonight?
I would move to recommend the minutes from special session Tuesday, August 15, 2023, special session Tuesday, August 29, 2023, regular session Tuesday, 21, 2023, public hearing Tuesday, November 21, 2023, closed session Tuesday, December 12, 2023, the special session of Friday, December 29, 2023, and the executive board session of Tuesday, January 9, 2024. Support.
Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, six zero. Thank you. We now have a proposed agenda. I do know that number six needs to go down. It's not in the consent agenda. It should be moved down right, the first item under action. We just moved that forward the other day. We did not, we did not move to support anything. Any other? Yes, Commissioner Alguier?
The workshop update, that was a six oh vote. I'm wondering why it's not in consent agenda.
I was going to ask that as well. I think someone would have to pull it down out of consent.
Mr. Chairman, was that not the intent, to pull that out? I think in one of your emails, I believe you had sent that you had requested it to be, if I misunderstood that, I apologize, but I thought you had forwarded that.
I had heard some concern about wanting to have discussion about the possibility, and I heard, I think, from one commissioner and a couple of community people, to pull that and discuss that. And Commissioner Ross is shaking her head.
Correct.
So we can take that off the consent agenda and move that down to talk about it.
Well, it is at number 12, right?
Right.
Okay, so, yes.
But we approved it last time, so I was just questioning.
So we need a commissioner to pull it down.
Yeah. So do we have a motion to pull that down, Commissioner Ross?
I move to pull number, well, it is down. That's why I'm confused.
No, you just need to ask for it to be pulled down.
I support that it's where it's at. It's good.
Do I have a support? I have a second.
That's all she needs to do, is ask. That's how the consent works. So you're welcome.
Okay. Any other?
Did she get support for that?
She, I don't need to.
Doesn't need to.
Right.
Do we have any other additions or deletions or changes? All those in support of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Wait a second. We need a motion to support it.
So moved.
Thank you.
Did we have a motion?
We got it over here. Cam.
Cam said support. I think we need.
Oh, no, I just moved it now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Support for them?
I'm thoroughly confused.
It's been moved. We're looking for a second.
It's still at the top of the agenda. Hold on to this.
Could I have a second to the motion?
I'll take it. Take it. All right.
All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
We will have an agenda. It's all six zero. And I will try to get my act together here.
I'll keep an eye on Jamie's.
And just, good luck.
We were now down to communications, pod commissions, and presentations with the administrative update.
So the first item under the administrative update is the planning director hire reporting designee. So at last week's meeting, I brought a resolution from, I believe, 2011 that addressed the planning director, based on the Planning Act that was approved. And that resolution indicated that only the board has the authority to hire or fire a planning director. And the letter that is in your packet was from Trudy, who, just to confirm, that is her understanding of that. And the only reason I brought that forward is because we currently have an interim finance director and only two staff in that planning department. And I know Commissioner Lautner has also expressed concern that, you know, we have two staff, we don't want to overburden that staff, and I cannot have the authority to hire even, even the replacement for the senior director if we're not certain that that's the direction that we're going to move them into. So.
Just to back up. Did you say interim finance director?
I'm sorry, I may have. I'm sorry. That's interim planning director.
We have an interim planning director.
I was here at 7:30, so a little grace. I'm on fumes. But yes, thank you. So the interim planning director. So with that said, I think that out of respect for them, we should identify a timeline for how long we will move forward with an interim planning director. And I don't think we have to make that motion right now, but I want to be able to be supportive of the staff in that department because they're doing a great effort. And so more to come on that. I just wanted the board to be aware. In regards to the second item, the beta update and legal representation, as requested, I did reach out to the clerk's office to see if they had any documents from past RFPs. And I think the last one the clerk's office was able to identify was like 1997, I believe.
For sure. And then we were still looking at some minutes with some potential, but.
Okay. So based on that, I was able to make some phone calls and identify at least one local firm that doesn't seem to have any conflict. However, I will remind the board that our legal counsel, Matt Norford, had suggested that we do an RFP, and that may also be the case. It certainly meets the objectives of our budget rules, that anything that's potentially over $5,000 would be put out to bid. The only concern I have is if this is an urgent issue, RFPs may take a little bit of time. But I don't think there's an immediate issue, but there is a pending issue. So if the board so chooses, I could move forward with seeking RFPs to move forward just to be prepared. So that being said, I just want to.
So you would be looking for an RFP just to ask them what their fees would be and their requirements, if they were to?
I think it would be to put a proposal together that would be based on specifically what we anticipate that their services may be. So it may be contract negotiation, it may be litigation, and there's very different standards based on either of those. If it was just contract negotiation, it's one set of fees. If it's litigation, it's a very different set of fees. And I feel pretty confident that it would exceed the budget rules $5,000. So then we would have to implement those budget rules and move forward with an RFP.
I'll defer to Jamie on this as our beta representative, but I think we should know more by the 24th about what the status is of the current negotiations. We do have a committee, the whole meeting on the 24th. We could also have a special meeting and decide to move forward at that time. If, Jamie, if you'd be willing to wait on that, hopefully by the 24th, it'll be resolved.
Yes, hopefully it will. We don't have to talk about this anymore. Um, oh gosh, I don't know. Uh, I mean, if we've done the legwork and we have someone on, it sounds like you've identified at least one local.
The board could also authorize me to, or could authorize waiving the bid process.
Oh, the bid policy, yeah.
So that could be some urgency.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think that's a bad idea. I mean, we're not, we're still not engaging them. We're just saying, if we need to engage them and engage them quickly, we'd waive the bid policy and then move forward. I don't think that's a bad idea.
And we, well, we could do that whenever we identify that person to, I mean, we would have to approve an agreement. So, but we could do that on the 24th if we needed to.
What are we at, 16?
Which is next week.
Well, it is. Go ahead, Cam. Yeah, I mean, I think being proactive as we have now, and we're ready to go, we have a plan that we could do, but to ask the administrator or someone to prepare an RFP, maybe, I just not real comfortable with, you know, that expenditure of your time and all the energy for something that we might know in nine days, you're saying, correct? Or 10 days? So as long as you're comfortable, though. Yeah, as long as the administrator is comfortable, like maybe having to do the hustle if something does happen, because that would be the position that we were in.
I'll, I'll reach back out to the firm. They have no conflict currently, based on conversation today, at least with one entity that I've talked to. So there are several other attorneys that do municipal council, but they do have some conflicts. So if, if we can move forward at least to maybe seek out what type of a proposal we would need and move forward, I'll have more information on the 24th.
Cool.
Everybody okay with that?
And then the last item is Cole Stoker and Toski, their legal counsel contract. There were two documents that Cole Stoker provided as part of their contract, either renewal or consideration for April. There was first the contract, and then they had an addendum that had the listing of all of their firm members and their, you know, CDCs. So anyhow, they're attached for your review. And that was just information I was asked to provide. So I did just want to mention also that I had met today with the Lebanon County Township Supervisors. They had their meeting here today. We had an opportunity to share some information about Brownfield and Q and A, and for them to meet Gail. Just so happened that our experts from, our consultants from Fischbeck were here for the Brownfield meeting this morning, and were able to give an overview to the supervisors in each of the departments about opportunities for potential funds for Brownfield or hazardous waste cleanup throughout the county. So it was a great dialogue. They were appreciative, and I was very pleased that we had experts here that could address any of their questions and concerns. So that is, that completes my report.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes, thank you. I asked Chairman Wessel before the meeting if he had spoken with Cole Stoker and Toski, actually technically Matt Norford, after our meeting. And he said he had, and I received a call from Matt as well. So he wanted to clarify that there was probably a misunderstanding last week with the information we were receiving on what we are allowed to do amongst ourselves outside of this room. So we are not allowed to poll, and we are not allowed to line our votes up, and we basically just don't deliberate. We don't deliberate towards the decision. We can't do any business outside of this table. So we can talk one on one to each other. And as he said last week, when I was trying to get him to clarify that even further, that it's good practice to not talk to more than three on any one issue. So I believe you told me he will be here in February to talk with the board, and he will clarify all that more then. But I just wanted to mention it now before we go any further, that please don't do business outside of this table for transparency.
Mr. Ross?
I have two things. Number one is I don't understand the miscommunication. I think that's what he told us. But we are encouraged to talk to each other outside of this boardroom. I believe that is not, that's sanctioned. That's okay to do that. So I want to sure, I'll be real anxious to hear Matt's explanation of that. I'd like, I'd like to go back, Administrator Allen, just to make sure I understand, the hiring of a planning director, still hold, we're responsible? This is what, we haven't made a decision on this, to change it? So right now, you can't go forward with any interviews or any even applications?
I could, we have, we actually have done interviews and did conduct two interviews for the position. I suppose fortunately, in retrospect, it was fortuitous that we decided to make the current senior planning director an interim planning director rather than offering her the position, because that would have potentially not been appropriate. So with this in mind, we, the board will need to decide, I would say, within the next month or two, the duration for the interim finance director, and also how the board wants to move forward, whether they can appoint a designee such as myself to make that decision, or the board can decide a committee, or they can take action themselves moving forward. So there are options.
So do we need to put that on an agenda, or?
It'll be on the February agenda to establish the timeline. I did, I did reach out and consulted with Trudy again with that. And there are, if we change the resolution, I think we have to do a public hearing. We can designate, or we can do the hiring, and the planning director could still report to the administrator. So there are lots of options, so we'll need some, some study on that. Commissioner Alguier?
Yeah, and I don't see any reason to change what's been for a very long time right now. There's no reason to do it differently. But to clarify, Gail also was one of our applicants. So I was there for the first part of the interviews, and my understanding is we also want to give her a chance to do the job for a while.
I, I was remiss in not introducing our new administrative executive assistant. Jill Rowley is with us this evening. So Jill started officially yesterday, and I've been enjoying her so far. So if you call, again, just ask for a little bit of patience from the community and also from the commissioners as we learn processes. Our, our temporary or interim assistant injured her back, and we intended that she would be a bridge to help Jill kind of transition, and she's not available. So we are doing our best, and everybody's been incredibly helpful and supportive. So we will, we are moving forward. So thank you.
Welcome. And after two days, she has a big smile on her face.
Yay, it's a good thing.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm supposed to remind everybody again to speak into the microphone. And the clerk is, did you bring your sign, Michelle?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. So we need to speak into the microphone. We're now at the point in our agenda, we thank the public for coming. We have an opportunity for a three-minute public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then again, a five-minute public comment at the end of the meeting. We would ask you, if you want to make public comment, to raise your hand, you'll be recognized. And so that the microphone picks you up, would you sit at the table to make your comments and speak loudly? So anybody like to come forward and make public comment? Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Kevin Gate. I'm a lifelong resident of Traverse City, Michigan. And my wife and I have enjoyed living in Elmore Township for the last 25 years. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, a little more about myself, I've spent 30 years in law enforcement here in Traverse City. New York again, I was in investigations, I was in detective, and 10 of those years was in a computer forensics investigation type mode, so to speak. So I've been to quite a few schools. Yeah, I'll move on to Claire, but I do have some experience with this. My comments are going to be in regards to some type of paper ballot, a manual counting of our future elections. I'm concerned about this, and I'm not going to go down the road of talking about how we do it currently, because I'm more focused on moving forward. The past is the past, and whatever the fallout that is will be what it is. But going forward, I think we're seeing in the nation multiple examples of how it can be done better. Last night, Iowa was a good example. They reconciled 89 counties in one evening. Also, I'm aware that over 200 counties at this point throughout the nation have switched to paper ballots. So I do think that there's always a better way to do things, and other locales or other entities end up discovering those ways to do it, and we need to look to them as examples instead of relying on what has not worked in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Yes, Judge Kromkowski.
Most of you know me, but I'm Mary Ann Kromkowski, and I'm in the Lebanon County Pro League Family Court Judge. And I believe most of the elected officials were here when John Sculten gave his report. And I had a chance to talk pretty much right afterwards with our treasurer, John Gallagher, who's going to share our thoughts, and that led to further discussions among the department and office heads, and then led to the collaborative letter being drafted that I would like to share with you tonight. And so the sheriff, his wife had surgery, and prosecutor wasn't feeling well, and Jen Grant, all of them have signed, but she was on vacation. Anyway, since that time, we've all read, well, saw the presentation, now we've all read his report, and we believe his findings appear to echo the staff and elected officials' comments provided first to Commissioner Wessel and then to Commissioner Ross. We don't know who said what, nor to be on the intention of sanctioning or encouraging any further efforts to secure the notes from or the identity of those who provided comments. They were assured confidentiality, and that must be honored. To do less would be a disservice to the county employees. Further, we reject the notion that all three of these individuals who were receiving the comments either fabricated or exaggerated their observations. The comments referred to in Mr. Sculten's report honestly are similar to complaints that some of us have heard or overheard from staff. We believe it's time for the board to move on and accept these findings, either perceptions or reality, and it doesn't really matter which they are. To reject them would be disrespectful not only to those who gathered the comments, but to the 85 staff who participated in that survey. We also believe that it would send a very unflattering message to the public and to all future personnel applicants if no action is taken on employee concerns. Staff participated with expectation that you, board, would take the comments seriously and act in timely fashion. I will provide all of you with a copy of our letter, but I'd just like to highlight some of the recommendations that we are encouraging you to, to consider. That the board, departments, and offices commit to develop a code of conduct based on civil discourse, cooperation, transparency, acceptance, that we are all here with specific duties, and an agreement that we will not overstep our prescribed boundaries. That we also commit to the prior board-approved decision to move forward with the separation of finance and human resources from the county clerk's office, adopt appropriate parameters for those two offices, and establish a clear chain of command for review or approval of their decisions. That the board begin the process of conducting an independent wage scale for all county employees, so we know whether we're in the middle, we're in the bottom, we're, we're hired. That the board also welcome the comments of the county administrator throughout.
Judge Kromkowski, I'm, I'm sorry, but. Motion to move. Do you give her more time?
Support, yep.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
I'll speak a little slower, I guess I'm not speaking too slow. That the board welcome the comments of the county administrator throughout the meeting, but in practice, such comments would not dominate the conversation or usurp the role of U.S. commissioners, but provide information, context, historical background to assist you in making decisions. We appreciate the efforts of our current county commissioner. She stepped into a sea of conflict, hidden agendas, and now the recent exodus of valued employees. As department heads, and Mr. Gallagher is here, we as department heads intend to take a stronger leadership role in combating what Mr. Paper has described as delays among the staff. And I will provide copies of the entire letter for you and for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, there's someone in the back of the room.
I was waiting for.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, yes, please come forward. Thank you.
My name is Rolf Wallhausen. That's spelled R-O-L-F. E is Victor, O-N, W-A-L-T-H-A-U-S-E-N. Make it harder, there's a space between the words.
Thank you.
I came prepared with all written out comments, and I spilled my tea on the way in. I'm gonna sort of go off my, go off topic a little bit, but I wanted to speak to, actually, public comment, and to say what privilege it is to be able to speak freely. I take my First Amendment rights very seriously, and this is not possible in many places in the world. And I just feel so grateful for that. That, that freedom of speech, though, it's not absolute. I was not able to walk into this room this evening and yell "fire." Okay? And we all have, we all are familiar with that. That's out of bounds. That's not, I don't have the freedom to say that. On a more personal level, I belong to a trade association, and federal trade law means that in meetings of our trade association, we're not allowed to talk about our prices. Now, I can talk about prices one-on-one before or after that meeting, but I'm not allowed to talk in that meeting. So my freedom of speech is, is a bridge, you could say. It's not absolute. So on a, on a larger level, I was trying to think of other types of speech that are out of bounds, and there are, there are many. Just a few that I think we all understand include libel, slander, fighting words, incitement to violence, hate speech. And that's where I stopped, and I wanted to find what is the definition of hate speech? And I submit this from Cambridge Dictionary, there are many definitions, you can look them up. So, so define as public speech that expresses hate or encourages violence toward a person or group.
I'm sorry. You have three minutes left.
Oh, wow. I would like to hear the rest of it.
Sure, I'd like to hear the rest of it.
Please. Thank you.
This is dangerous.
Yes.
Keep doing it.
No, go ahead, Sheriff. Thank you.
And this includes not just speech, it includes writing, it includes graphics, it includes pictures, it includes all types of speech. And I'm, what I'm concerned with is, and I'll wrap this up, my last point is that there are certain types of speech that in my way of thinking are appropriate in one venue, but maybe not in another. For instance, out in the parking lot after a meeting, there's a whole different array of what. of what might be appropriate. But in this body, it seems to me that we should limit our speech to, ideally, to the agenda and to issues that are facing you all and governing our county. And when something rises to the level of being unprotected speech, I think you should feel empowered to call that out and to say, there's a limit. Free speech is not absolute, and this is not appropriate. Take it outside.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public...yes, Bill?
It's not hate speech. Be concerned about fraud in the elections. And that's what I'm concerned about. And the handout I just gave you, in fact, to not speak would be functional hate, to not speak up if there's fraud going on. And I'm not saying people know and are practicing it here, but there's so much evidence of fraud. I gave out the handout the last time I was here. There was 142 examples of fraud. Just happened to be in the five swing sticks. Just happened to be in the middle of the night, they stopped the counting in those five swing sticks. This handout, the front, that Georgia-Trump-Biden ratio was 49.9, Trump 50.1, Biden 90 times in a row. Now, it doesn't say 49 or 50. It gives you different numbers. You don't recognize it. But if you do the division, and it comes off the Edison or whatever, their printouts, just regular, saying who voted for what 90 times in a row. Before this, it was 50 times in a row. If you notice here, it's a little PID controller. It's like putting on your cruise control, which probably you're used with the ice out there. But that's determined. It's an algorithm in the computer. And there's 90 times...yeah. The second page, the Nuremberg Trials, it's not directly related, but there, people followed the law. There were laws in Germany that said this is legal. But then the world came to you, Europe. If you have a law like that, if you're doing this type of crime, it's not legal. You shouldn't obey the laws. The Secretary of State's broken the laws six times, six times. So they shouldn't...you know, it's in a hard position here, but what do we do? Do we go along with this, or do we back up the people and we do not count them? One of the things, they were punished for is enslavement. And I read through that. And the last little thing, I don't know if it's been read already, because it's asked if somebody read it tonight, but the People's Party in Taiwan won the national election, 23.5 million paper ballots, no machines, no internet connections, no foreign interference, all hand counted, was a win-win. No harm in doing it that way. And I think I'm about on the point. And no fraud, one ballot, one vote, one day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comment? Yes?
Carrie Onon, Central Township. Thank you all for your service as our commissioners. We appreciate not only your hard work, but your sincere desire to do what's best for our county. Thank you. It's our understanding that back on May 11th of 2021, our prior admin, Mr. Janik, was blindsided by the actions taken that day, just as much as was the board at the time. You all probably know that already, but we want to do to understand that that's our understanding as well. So we understand our current board voted unanimously to invite Mr. Janik to lead the board government's workshop, which makes sense to us. Apparently, he's done these in our county before, has always done a good job. He's very knowledgeable. He knows the personalities involved and certainly knows the culture really well, which means he can speak quite specifically, I think, to the challenges facing our county. So it also sounds like he's leaving or has recently led one of these workshops in Grand Travers County and in several municipalities across the state. And so choosing Mr. Janik to lead the board government's workshop for our county makes sense to us as well. Thank you for that. On a related note, we understand that at a recent leadership meeting, our current admin, Ellen, took a poll of those in attendance on this issue. I heard it touched on it ago. But this issue that is strictly a board decision. This is getting to be a sensitive topic for us, a hot topic. We're hoping this is simply a stake on her part, that she didn't really intend to do that or was caught up in the moment, I'm not sure. But in any case, we would like an explanation for her actions at that leadership meeting. We respect Admin Ellen very much and are grateful to all the help that she gives us in getting up to speed with one. We are increasingly concerned about various department heads in our county government taking actions or being given authority to do tasks that belong strictly to our elected officials. That is our connection with you, and you are our elected officials. We want to see you taking those actions and not delegating things that ought not be delegated. So that's an important distinction. It's becoming increasingly important to us, and we expect you all to respect that vision of authority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Any other public comment? We want to thank you for coming, and we will have another public comment at the end of this meeting. And we now are at commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments? Commissioner Olgar?
I guess I'd like to just give a short update on the Energy Futures Committee's work on a grant that our administrator has assisted with in giving access to information. But there are federal grants for energy efficiency. We are in the process of writing for a grant that would pay for solar. It would save the county about $40,000 a year, which is real money. This is just an application. It would, at this point, the space that it looks like the solar field could be would be as you go up the driveway, up those hills, on the edge, on the edges, because there's also a septic field there. But there is plenty of room also for solar. The extra little parking lot is not big enough, so that it probably wouldn't be considered. But I just want you to know that we are working to access grant money, which is our tax dollars, and bring them back here to serve all of us and save us $40,000 a year. So that's just an update. It will be on the February agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner, work?
Yes, sir. I hate to start a debate on public comment or commissioner comment. No way, shape, or form will there be solar panels in view of the veteran memorial. Thank you.
They wouldn't be at the veterans' memorial.
Any other commissioner comment? Okay, thank you. We are now at that point in our agenda that it's a consent agenda, and I'd like to read a statement about the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner, as you saw earlier today, may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected and will not need a second. Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda minus item number six for consideration.
Support. All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved 6-0. We are now down to the Teamster Union Letter of Understanding.
This issue was on the agenda, and Commissioner Lotner and Commissioner Wessel, as part of the negotiating committee...sorry, hope this isn't messing you up, you not being a... both of them being the committee, not, excuse me, negotiations committee, met with legal counsel regarding this matter, and it was recommended that we have two separate letters to address letters of understanding with the union. One related to the recent hiring of a FOIA coordinator, and the second related to our an issue with the sheriff's office regarding an unpaid working lunch. One hour unpaid lunch period, which has been a standard practice and is approved by the employee and by the employer. That all being said, these documents are provided for the board's approval. I will defer to Commissioner Lotner and Commissioner Wessel.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes. Okay, so for sure, I think the FOIA coordinating position is pretty standard. The issues that came up as a concern for the letter of agreement is the secretary at the sheriff's office. It's listed as a 40-hour work week. So if that employee chooses to work through their lunch, they're paid for 40 hours. If they choose to take a lunch hour or half hour, they will not be paid for that half hour. But they do continue to receive work credit for that half hour or hour, even if they do not work it, for their benefit package continues on through. That raised concern amongst...
I don't know what you're not hearing, you said that.
So when the employee, as employees work, they get credit for days worked, match sick leave time, vacation time, et cetera, MERS.
Okay.
So because this is a 40-hour work week set at 8:00, no lunch, basically, she'll be expected to work through. But if she does take that hour off or half hour off, she will continue to gain those benefits, even if she's not paid for that hour. Okay? So that raised issue with employees in this courthouse or in this side of the parking lot, because this is a 35-hour work week. They're expected to take that one hour lunch. This did pass the union, which is why we're presenting it tonight, but it does open up more flexibility for employees on this side of the street. So they're allowed to work up to 40 hours. It would be straight time. They won't get those same benefit packages for that hour of lunch, but at least they will be paid for that hour of lunch if they work through. So it may change some work times. We may see employees coming in at 8:30, leaving at 4:30, and we may see them coming in at 9:30, leaving at 5:30. So it's going to open up that flexibility for all the employees in this side of the street.
And they can work through their lunch?
Yes, and get paid for it.
That's what I always do. If agreed upon through the employer. Yeah. It just works.
The department head and/or the elected official would still be the supervisor, and they would have to approve that. This is a letter that is recommended by our attorney, and if we want further discussion, we can, or if we want a motion to approve, we can.
I would move to approve the letter of understanding between the Teamsters and Leila County as presented.
I would like time to read this.
Sure.
Is my motion completed?
I didn't hear that. Would you speak into your mic?
I'd like to read more of it.
Oh, okay. Let's take a second or a minute and read it. Any additional questions for the administrator or for Commissioner Lotner or me?
Yeah, what the FOIA coordinator, have I missed something about that? You've hired somebody?
The prosecutor has hired a FOIA coordinator, as approved previously by the board. She started today, I believe. Outstanding candidate.
Do we have a motion on the table to approve both these letters of understanding?
Support.
Any further discussion? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved 6-0. Thank you. Kathy and Deb, we now have the broadband project.
Kathy, you want to take the lead on this one?
Sure. Chris here is not able to be with us tonight, and we, at the last meeting, we discussed just the scope of his oversight and management to seek with broadband to fruition. We also have the unserved portion of Leila County that would be provided internet access by Charter. We haven't nailed down the final number on that. Chris would like to oversee Charter's installation so that...that's, you know, a separate understanding because broadband is a project that you all took on. He, the board, indicated that they have some unknowns with the Charter arrangement, and they wanted to break that out of the scope of the project and have a contract strictly with a proposed oversight of completion of my broadband. We have redlined and redlined a proposal and a contract for next week. I think just ask you to let us put it to committee of the whole, because it is going to impact your capital opening discussion as well if you take on that additional project. And we have Charter in the back of your mind as well, because it is, I think, we've heard probably Patricia's little spoil, how important it is that Chris helped oversee this so that the price you pay to the people of the county for this utility, I guess if you want to call it a utility, is handled well. But I'm not here to sell it. I'm just here to say we'll move it to committee of the whole and make it a part of the capital opening discussion so you are looking at all of your big projects for 2024. Does that sound good?
Okay, so we don't have the materials, we don't have the information tonight to approve his work with point. But he is okay with doing it next week in our committee of the whole?
He was just predisposed to be in the charters tonight.
And will he be here on the committee of the whole?
Did we talk to him about that?
We'll have to follow up with Chris. We had legal counsel documents that he was reviewing, and so that delayed a little bit. So I think it makes perfect sense for us to move it to the 24th, and we'll reach out to Chris tomorrow to see if he's, make sure he'll be available. I think that'd be great. Thank you.
And if he's not, Patricia could also...
And Chris also said that he is flexible, that if we need to move this to the February executive committee meeting, he understands... executive committee meeting, he understands, but if we can move it forward faster and have discussion, I think everyone wants to make sure that we're continuing to move this project forward.
Yes.
We did get an update on his travel expenses, and that was included in the amount and not extra.
That's good to know.
I have a misconnection of information in my head, so I apologize.
It makes, yeah, that makes sense.
Everybody comfortable with moving it forward, and Commissioner Rexroth will be here at that time as well.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Christensen, thank you for being here.
These documents are on page twenty-three and twenty-four in your packet.
Good evening. The documents are in front of you, the chain, the other name, the kind of thing that the mountain is real, no budget, no kind of thing, I'm not asking for full payment credit.
Yes, Commissioner Ruff?
I move to recommend to the county board of commissioners approval of county resolution two thousand, two thousand twenty-four dash, resolution pledging the full faith and credit of the county of Leland County within constitutional limitations for the payment of the South Bar Lake Drainage District Drain Note as presented.
Support. Any discussion or questions for Steve? Clerk do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Augier?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Six zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Christensen.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
We now have our treasurer here on a land bank fast track proposal.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. Before you guys have resolution presented last, last time, what's changed on it in seventy-dollar amount? From a hundred thousand to a hundred twenty and change, the post is to support the land bank through Tru's work. At the end of her tenure, she came up and understood that there was funds that were eligible to be transferred to the general fund, and then moved, so she presented the idea to the land bank and to the finance committee to this resolution before you. What I'm looking to do is move this and have this approved tonight to further our efforts in the land bank with affordable housing and its initiatives. Any other questions?
Commissioner Lotner?
Yeah, John, just for the, just for, because this is probably, as far as the county's land bank fast track authority goes, in its association with quote-unquote affordable housing, so perhaps for the public, you might explain how this would, how it's not a cost to the public for this, but also maybe an example of how this might be used.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, these funds were derived from housing program that Tru administered. These programs are earned through the repayment of loans that were established in the housing program. These funds are now eligible to be transferred. What the land bank would be able to do with them would be similar to what we do with Tampa City Crossings or Binner View or Reach project of the north part. These projects, what I try to do is work with the developer of affordable housing, amable housing, such as like home stretch or habitat or humanity. Working with them, we can develop, build up a schedule, actually determine an estimated taxable value for that property. When I entered into an engagement with them, I understand what these properties are going to be put on the taxable for, and also what I can put into the property and recruit through the tax increment financing. So I leverage both the dollars that we use in tax increment financing to move these projects forward and their title or do abatement and so on. Does that help you, Commissioner?
Oh, absolutely. Good job, John.
Any other questions for the treasurer? Could I have a motion?
Oh, this is a resolution.
Now, what was the dollar amount, because it's-
One hundred and twelve.
It's a hundred and twelve thousand, right? Two seventy-four, okay. I thought it was something else.
Resolution is on twenty-eighth of our board packet.
The proposed motion is in this handout that I gave you. That was gone through with the treasurer this afternoon, it's under action item nine.
I think it's page three.
So, so I moved to rec, I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners move for, uh, use the land bank fast track authority non-programmed income use resolution. Oh, sorry, this is not working.
Can you read it from this? Someone else want to take? Can you, it's right on here.
I got it. James got it.
Okay. I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve Leland County resolution. Is that it? Twenty-twenty-four, no number, a resolution to provide the county land bank fast track authority with capacity building funding for attainable housing initiatives.
Second. Sorry.
Any further discussion or questions?
And you're going to add the numbers to the resolution so I can keep track of them, so.
Yep.
Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Augier?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Six zero.
Thank you, and thank you, John. This is going to be helpful, I think. Thank you.
Very much.
We now are down to a approval of a copy, copier-maintenance agreement bids on page twenty-nine of our board packet.
So I move that Leland County Board of Commissioners accept the annual maintenance agreement with Netflix Business Solution based, based the bid submitted with yearly renewals based on the bid.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six zero. Next item on the agenda is the raw data update. The Board of Commissioners asked me to reach out to Dr. Sculton for additional data. I did do that as the board had requested me to do that. I did send to you his response to me. I brought copies of that, and I would take questions or entertain discussion.
Well, you sent us that letter several days ago, so.
This is the letter I sent you.
I think we've all digested that.
So in other words, he says he will not give us the information that we paid for. I mean, that's it in a nutshell. We asked for all of the information, all of the data received, and we made it very clear, Judge Kromkowski, that we asked that the identity, the identity of those involved would be redacted. So what this says then is that, well, let me go a little bit further than, bigger than the nutshell, for those employees that responded, many who gave documentation which backed up their responses is buried, and we will not get that. So some might be okay with that. I find that sad that we have employees in this courthouse whose voice just was silenced, and I disagree with all of, of those comments being buried.
Okay. Commissioner Russ?
Yes, I'd like to support what you wrote and what Mr. Sholton responded with, is that he was asked to do a survey. A survey did not have any stipulation that you would get all the raw data. That was never an expectation. You mentioned information that was given to Dr. Sholton in a brown paper envelope. He was never contracted to sift through documents. That was not part of what we asked him to do. That is not what he agreed to do. He did not present that because it wasn't part of what we asked, starting with our HR director, Weaver. So I think this is time to put this behind us, and I'm going to echo Judge Kromkowski's call for us to start moving forward and not argue about some employees not being heard because they still will have a chance to be heard. This conversation is not over. This is just the start, but we want to start now.
Commissioner Kramer?
I wholeheartedly disagree. I know that there are a number of people in this building who feel very vindicated right now, and I hear you and feel you. I also recognize, I think everyone needs to recognize that there are two sides to every story. It's also extremely detrimental and unprofessional to, to put a survey out the way that we did, to put it in front of all of the employees. I did research on how to, for best practices on a climate survey. It specifically mentioned the fact that you don't air it in public, you don't name names, you don't do that. You're not, you're, you're taking, you're essentially becoming the bully, and we have done that, and we need to take responsibility for our role in what just happened here, because that was not a professional survey. I looked at the documentation, and the whole entire time I was in awe at what I was looking at. It looked like a seventh-grade book report, and I apologized to Dr. Sholton, and I'm sure he was well-intentioned, but that is not what I expected, nor was it what I thought we were going to pay for as a board. I also, Ty, I, I know that we're going to talk about this, and I know that we talked about this earlier. When you drafted this letter to him, I don't think you needed to include the things that you did, and I don't necessarily know we would have the outcome that we're having right now if that letter had been drafted as if it were the entire board that was seeking this information instead of calling commissioners out about being against him or, you know, calling his information bias, because you, you receive a reaction from a person that is, that is in line with that, and I think we need to work on that. Like, when we are looking for these answers, we all need to work on being unbiased, recognizing that there are two sides to every story, and if we don't step out and step forward as this board, as that unbiased, higher-level leadership, we are not going to be able to move any of these employees forward. So I, I, I really don't, I think we need to figure out something else. I think governance training is one, but we also need to step in some other direction. We need that raw data. We need to know the entire story, and we can't, it's been, it has essentially been cherry-picked. Do I think that he was maybe, like, actually intending on doing what he did? Absolutely not, but we've got to figure out something else, because this is not, this is not the entire solution. And Judge Kromkowski, I really appreciate your recommendations, and we will take them into consideration, and I appreciate everything that you've put together. I think we just need to get the entire picture. So that's all I have.
Before I call on you, I'd like to respond because Commissioner Kramer directed the response, and thank you for doing that. Not only did I reach out to Dr. Sculton and tell him that the board had asked me to do that, but I sent him the, the unedited minutes of last week's discussion with all of the commissioners' comments, and I sent him the link to the video of last week's meeting. Before he responded, he read the minutes and he watched the video, so he did hear each of our concerns. I disagree, we're in different spots on, on the outcome and what he produced, but he did hear all your voices in his response. Commissioner Augier?
I was disappointed that people were named in that. It never occurred to me, I've never asked for a survey like this before. Darned experience, right? I just assumed we would not have the naming of specific names. I appreciate Judge Kromkowski's list. I think it's really important that elected officials and department heads work together, and I'm using your words, to improve and encourage communications with and among all staff for the betterment of the county. Department heads can do a whole lot to work with their own staff on complaints and problems that are occurring, and I really think that's one of the important places it needs to start. If someone, and I, I am willing, I, we need to learn, but one of our goals this year with our new administrator was that that kind of talk and healing be happening throughout the building and in, in every department, so that department heads could be talking to their people, resolving issues, talking among themselves. We need, former Commissioner Tonneberger mentioned focus groups, perhaps. I think we need to learn what steps can be taken to help people learn to address their concerns and work together. Just work together. I'm going to put a period after that.
Thank you.
We're at the beginning of the road, so I appreciate your letter and appreciate that first step.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, thank you. I thought your period meant you were done.
No, I was done with that. I was not going to get myself in trouble with saying things.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes, let's talk about the letter for a minute. There's a whole bunch of good points on here, such as chain of command. The people on this letter, Joel Hubbell, Marion Kromkowski, Jennifer Grant, Mike Barkovich, and John Gallagher. I know all of these people pretty well. I've worked several years for all of them, they're very respected people. This whole thing reminds me of a bad domestic violence when I used to be a police officer. It's time to take this letter, follow it, divorce it, make a divorce between what this letter suggests. I don't care what it costs to get a CPA in here. Mr. Steve Mikowski, the last thing, he, he showed us this classified ad for beta, experienced finance director from a hundred and ten to a hundred and thirty thousand. We wasted more money than that. What we need to do, within ninety days, hire a experienced finance director, separate it, get it over. A lot of times, feelings get hurt a little bit, and I'm sorry that some names were, were brought up in this thing, I was surprised that mine wasn't, because sometimes I'm a little outspoken and irrational behavior also, and maybe a little toxic at times, but that's just the way I am, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner O'Hara?
So, we're expected to go forward with some employee comments, but not all employee comments, even anonymously. I see that my fellow commissioner, who sent me an email, which I will share with you, wants the employees that were not represented in that survey to come forward and speak up, so we can act on facts and not hearsay. so we can act on facts and not hearsay. Yet, there were no facts at all presented with this report, only, only hearsay. Yet, now, that's what we, we now say, well, we, we don't, we don't want to move forward that way. I'm just finding so much is, everyone is outside their box, and I'm sorry, Judge Kromkowski, but you're outside your box. You're outside of your lane. So you say that, that we don't, do not know, let's see, you say, you want to have, oh, I already spoke about the identity. We had made it very clear when we asked for all the, all the data that we wanted to leave the identities out. That was, we were very clear on that. So then we, so then you go on to say that the board approved a decision to move forward with the separation of the Finance and Health Department, or the Finance and Human Resources. That has already been done, and yet, yeah, that's the path we are taking, that's already been done, and yet that's what we hear hammered. The board is, the board is in the process of conducting a wage scale study. That is another thing that's up to this Board of Commissioners. I looked on here to see, I could see one person on this list of, of elected officials that signed this letter that was here the last time we tried a wage study. One. So having never lived through a wage study, hell hath no fury like the results of a wage study. I think other things can be done, and I think that, and I know for a fact that is something that's up to this Board of Commissioners. You go on to talk about the county administrator providing, you begin to tell us how we operate up here without, excuse me, with our one employee. So I'm talking about the, talking about a letter given to us telling us how to do our job, when everything in this report says they want everyone to stay inside their lane. Everyone stay inside your lane, but yet tell us how to do our job. You speak about, you speak about reasons employees left, and it's not truthful. It absolutely is not truthful. If you spoke to that employee personally, you would know that, that...
I'm not sure this is directly related to the...
Can I call a question?
And I have one more comment to make, and it's absolutely right. Strong leadership to combat the malees among the staff does not start...
Can I call a question?
There is a question called.
So there's a motion. We're, we're, we're on Action Item Number 11.
A motion wasn't made, so...
So if I, so to finish, we do definitely need to combat the malees, but you, everybody, if we are going to move forward at all, it is for everyone to stay in their own lanes, period. Period.
Commissioner Russ?
I would like to move, please, make a motion. I would like to, to move that the County Board of Commissioners accepts the survey as presented and that this board moves forward on working on a plan to include all voices as we go forward. All voices, all voices must be heard and to come up with a plan to help create a more positive climate in this building.
Can we move into some discussion? You want to speak to it first?
This is so disrespectful. I'm sorry. I just can't, I can't sit in this room when this kind of level of disrespect is being shown for our employees, for myself, for the public who has to listen to this. It is time for us to just accept and say this is not perfect, but it's time to move forward with action, and that'll include listening as much to as many people as we need to, to make sure we have the right plan going forward. So I, I want to call this question and get it over.
Mr. Kramer?
I'm going, if this were by business and not a government entity, I would be ashamed of how we provided this information to the general public. And I, personally, since I don't think the board at this time is ready, I would like to apologize to everyone who's been personally affected by the words that came from this desk. I would like to personally apologize for my part in voting for this. This is not what I intended as an individual, and I'm hoping that we can start steering, all of us in a better direction, because this was not the way to heal this county government entity. And I don't necessarily know what is the right action. I don't believe accepting this would be the first right action. So that's where I'm sitting.
Commissioner Algaier?
I'm a little bit confused. So the survey has happened. We all know we need to be looking at next steps, but I'm not comfortable agreeing to a motion until we've, I think we need to figure out what we want to do. I don't think we've done that yet, so I'm not comfortable voting on something we haven't figured out yet.
That's what we need to figure out. That's what the motion is.
But you're...
To start working towards what that looks like.
The motion, the motion on the floor is to accept the, accept the report.
Accept the report and move forward.
It's just to accept that we did the report. We did do the report.
We did do the report. It's not even accepted. It's closing the report.
So why are we having to accept it?
Because I'm probably...
And we did it.
Commissioner Rourke?
Anyway. I'm a little confused.
Commissioner Lotner?
The intent of the motion is the most important thing, and the intent of this motion is to say that we accept, and by accepting is another way of saying approving. I absolutely will not support your motion to force this report on, on this Board of Commissioners based on the fact that it is not complete. We have, this did not speak to all of the issues. We know there are many, and it did not speak to all the issues. I will not accept it.
I have not had my opportunity to speak, so I, I will speak. I, I think it's pretty normal business that when you get a report, you either reject it or you accept it. Doesn't mean we have a final plan. I plan on voting yes in support of accepting the report, but I also note that I'm very uncomfortable sometimes with what we say to our public, and we all have our own individual style on how we do that. I'm not going to tell Judge Kromkowski that Commissioner Lotner was wrong, but I don't agree with her.
That's your right.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further conversation?
Could we restate it? The simpler it is, the better for me.
I just want to follow the agenda correctly. Is this motion being made under the Culture Survey, Survey Raw Data Update topic?
No. Well, it's the Action Item 11.
Yeah.
Moving forward, correct?
The motion was by Ross to, that the Leilinaw County Board of Commissioners, motion by Ross to move that the county board accept the survey as presented, and this board move forward on a plan to include all voices as we go forward. All voices, all voices must be heard and create a plan to create a something environment.
Positive.
More positive.
More positive, I have to. And that was really very wordy, so if you, yeah, sorry.
That may be the longest motion we've had before this board in 10 years. All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved for two. Thank you.
We are now down to the Board Governance Workshop update, and do you want to kick this off?
Well, what I can say is I was asked to reach out to our, our MLI consultant, Chet Janik, also prior administrator, to provide guidance on this in terms of Governance Workshop. He has offered to do that, as he has done in other areas. I was also asked to reach out to MSU because they also do governance, and I talked to John Amren, and he is also willing. We have a discussion tomorrow morning, I believe, it's either tomorrow or Thursday morning, to discuss what he may be able to offer when he speaks to the group at the Committee of the Whole meeting on January 24th. So we have two options for the board to consider or move forward with.
And by the way, I did ask the administrator to reach out to John from Michigan State after I heard that department chairs had some concern and I had some public concerns. That wasn't a decision. I just said, see if there are other options. If Chet does this, it's not his MLI, it's just Chet on his own. He would not be doing it, and he would, you know, pay.
Commissioner Algaier?
I voted for Chet to do this because he knows this county inside and out. A Governance Workshop is just teaching us, reminding us what our statutory duties are. It's not, it's just a training on what we can do, how we can do it, what is legal, what our statutory duty is. So it's not that he's coming in to talk about other issues. This is just a training. He knows what has been done here. He knows the role of the board. He knows the role of the administrator, and I, and he's free, and I think that's very appropriate, and I'd like to, and we voted on that, and I see no reason to change that vote.
Commissioner Lotner, and then Commissioner Russ.
Yes. I moved that Leilinaw County Board of Commissioners schedule an effective Governance Workshop with Chet Janik in January of this year or earlier, or early February.
Second.
Discussion?
So I guess I get to speak to the issue first. Thank you, Commissioner Algaier. I think that was very well put. It gets to the, it gets to the bottom line of what exactly the workshop is supposed to do, and I'm confident that Chet will do a fantastic job. I have sat through these with Chet before. I have sat through these with John before, and I've sat through these with our attorneys before. So there are many different styles. I think Chet has a really good and easy style. He really engages everyone in him, so I'm sure Chet will do a great job.
Commissioner Russ, and then Commissioner Kramer.
Yes, I, I did vote last week to move this forward, but I have been giving it some very important thoughts and listening to some very important people that I respect in this county, not only employees, but people, my constituents, and what came back to me again and again was Chet would do a wonderful job, absolutely, but I feel like he is too close and he has too much history with what we're trying to change. So I would just ask if we could wait until we have Mr. Armryne's presentation on the 24th at our Committee of the Whole, hear his side of how he might approach the governance, and let us just give that a little bit more thought, that do we really want to bring back the old, or are we looking to the future and maybe some new ideas that possibly another person could bring to our board? We all have heard John speak at, through our Zoom meetings. We've also heard him speak at our training officially when we, we became new commissioners. He obviously is, is an expert in the field, and I just think this is an opportunity for us to make sure that we're heading, making a plan in the right direction, gathering all of the information, listening to everybody that has a thought before we make a decision on choosing Chet Janik once again.
Commissioner Kramer, and then Commissioner Algaier.
I agree with Kimma that we need to listen to everyone, which is exactly why I think we need to not only have Chet come in, I think we also need to move forward. So I think the combination of both worlds is really what we need. We need historic information, and we need how to move forward. How does this generally run? How, what are things like? What we're, I mean, we are, we are sitting with, in a board with mostly newbies and a new administrator, so we need that historic data. We also need a new and better way to operate and govern moving forward, and the marriage of those two things, I think, are what we need.
And what I'm hearing is two different things. A Governance Workshop is not going to be addressing the issues that we found in the survey. Governance Workshop is just pure training on what our statutory duty is, what our roles are. What you're talking about, we need to do, but it's a completely different workshop. Okay? So I hear you, and that's not what we're supposed to be talking about in a Governance Workshop. We don't have the option of saying, well, we don't like that statutory duty. We're going to do something else. It's pretty cut and dry, the kinds of things we're talking about. I think we need to do what you want to do, but we need to figure out how we want to do that and who we want to do it with, because that's a completely different area. Does that make sense?
It does make sense to me, but I think to learn our role and how governance actually works is at the heart of how we're going to change going forward. If we all are understanding of the facts of what statutorily we are responsible for and what is not in our lane, I just want to make sure that the person that's teaching us, I just want to have the best person in the room, whether it's Chet or it's John, I don't care. I just want to make sure that this board makes a decision based on facts, and, and I think waiting until we can hear from John, I, I think it's a good idea, but...
We've all talked at the table here about needing to listen to staff, and I would ask the administrator if she's willing to say what she heard from your department chairs and...
I think that's irrelevant.
Yeah, I'm interested, no, thank you.
I, I think that's a perfectly okay.
Do you want to have discussion? Can we have discussion on that?
I'm in rule it's appropriate. If you can, if you want to call that out, you'll have to.
I do.
The chair's decision is being challenged. All those in support of that challenge and not allowing me to speak to the administrator about this, you say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion lost. Would you speak to what you heard from the department chair?
Well, what I can tell you, and I appreciate the fact that Judge Kromkowski is still here because she was part of that. When we were having a conversation at the department head meeting after the Executive Committee session last Wednesday, the discussion was, my part of the discussion was focused on moving forward and focusing on that kernel of information that was shared during the survey results, that the one thing that was unifying of all staff was the fact that all staff agreed that they were committed to civil service and committed to serving the residents of Leilinaw County. That was the focal point that I had discussed. I had also talked about the possibility of a code of conduct on how we will agree to address each other that was similar to what I believe will be shared with the Board of Commissioners, actually is exactly the same document, but I asked the leadership team that we should wait and let the Board of Commissioners take the lead on that, and then we would have a discussion following that in terms of a code of conduct. Those were the items that I brought forward. What was discussed at the meeting, and I don't believe I was the one to initiate it at all or to take a poll of the employees whatsoever, and the only other person, I think, in this room that was in that meeting was Judge Kromkowski. Jen was there, took notes, and also I believe John was not in the meeting, so, but I can, you know, I know Jen, you probably were the one that shared the notes on that, but I don't believe there was a poll. I think people were asked, like, what are your thoughts, but it was not a poll...
Vote.
Or a vote by any means.
Would you like to speak, Jen? Would you like to speak, Jen?
It was a vote. It was at the time when we were there, Judge started the conversation. Okay. In my notes. That's okay. In my notes, it states that the conversation started as to who selected Chet, and did say it was by board motion that Chet would be doing the governance. And then discussion around the table was basically, why Mr. Janik? At that time, Administrator Allen asked those people to raise their hand as to who would want Chet to do the governance. At that point, no one raised their hand. I did raise my hand afterwards, stating it didn't matter to me if it was Janik. It didn't matter to me if it was MSU. What I want everyone to understand is their statutory duties, not just even the board. I stated to the, to the administrator that government 101 would be best for all elected officials, and that all department heads and the administrator understand their rules. So yes, there was a vote. No one put their hand up when she asked for it. That is in my notes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Are we ready to, what's the motion? Do we have a motion on the floor?
I think the motion is to have Chet Janik do the.
Can I?
You may speak, yes. Commissioner Kramer.
I'm getting increasingly.
Alarmed?
Alarmed. Our administrator moving forward and taking action on things that we, as a board, did not discuss. First and foremost, it is my understanding that it is our board's duty to provide our administrator with next best action. And there have been a number of times now, probably more than I can count, that our administrator is taking action without board approval. And this is just not sitting well with me at all, and it's continually, and this, and this is just another one of those moments. I hear that they don't want us to bring Chet back. I hear that. But was it something that you brought to us to go to the department heads and take that sort of vote and poll? I don't, I don't recall doing that. I mean, I wasn't here, but I don't even know if any of you here did that.
Thank you. The last 10 years I've been here, the Wednesday after every executive board meeting, there is a meeting with the administrator and the department heads, and they review the discussions that take place at the executive committee. That's legitimate. That's part of the structure. That's part of the purpose in those department head meetings. I see nothing wrong with, and I would expect that our administrator would keep the staff updated on what we talk about in a public meeting.
Updated.
Yes, Commissioner Lotner.
I, I agree 100% with the updating. I agree 100% that I'm, I'm very alarmed by, by what went on. So the Board of Commissioners operates, and we operate in front of the public. Everything we say, everything we do is in front of the public. They know how we feel. They know what we say. They see our votes. And to have our administrator poll our elected officials on an action we did to change that course of action is not all right. It is all wrong. If any one of those elected officials wanted to call us, and I did not receive a single phone call from, there's only five on here, and there are six elected officials, and I, and I see one maybe did not sign this, but maybe somebody signed this for them, that they, not one of them called me. None of them called me and said, hey, gee, I've got a concern with Chet doing the, doing this survey. And we took a vote today, and we want you to change your mind. It was, it was inappropriate. There's just no two ways about it, because if this is how we're going to, I mean, it looks to me like you just want to run this kind of, where everyone tells us how to do our job, other than we tell us how to do our jobs.
Point of order. I'm sorry. This is disrespectful language, and I do not appreciate that. I'm going to.
Mr. Chairman, I have the floor.
She did call for point of order. That is appropriate. I have to rule on her point of order.
That wasn't a point of order.
She did say.
That is not a point of order.
She did say point of order.
Okay, but, all right, but it is.
I'm going to rule on her point of order.
You're going to cut me off again, right? So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to finish my, my respectfully.
I would like to. We will dismiss for five minutes, please. Toxic means period.
Yeah. No, we're not.
11 months, Sam.
You're bad.
I'm sorry.
Are you ready, Madam Clerk? Okay, a point of order was called, and that's an appropriate way to do business. I'm going to deny the point of order and ask Commissioner Lotner to continue her thought, but please be respectful.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. The last part of my comment is, point I'm making is that I don't think our sheriff would appreciate us going across the road and telling him how he should sheriff. I don't think the judge would appreciate us going upstairs and telling her how to run her courts. I don't think the treasurer would appreciate us going down the hall and telling him how to do his statutory duty of collecting taxes. I don't think our register of deeds would appreciate us going down the hall and telling her how to collect her register of deeds, or how to document her deeds, and register the deeds of the county. I don't think our prosecutor would appreciate us going upstairs and telling him how he should do his job as well. And that is my point. We have a job. We, we report to our constituents. We report to the taxpayers of this county, and we will do the job that they ask us to do. And respectfully, I say, everyone needs to be in their offices. Everyone needs to do the jobs they're up here to do, and think about it before they start stepping outside their lanes and allow those down the hall to do their jobs, allow us to do our job, and, and continue to do their jobs in the fine fashion that they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Any other comments? Commissioner Ross?
I am just asking for respect to be shown, everybody in this room. And I think language that is accusatory and, if you have a problem with someone, walk down or come on down and talk with them. Do not bring it up in a meeting and try to make it worse. Talk to people. Communicate. Teamwork. I think those are words that I've heard before, and I think that's part of it, is starting by listening and not just accusing, so.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Are we ready to vote? The motion is, would you read the motion?
Michelle?
The motion that the Lillina County Board of Commissioners schedule an effective governance workshop with Chet Janik in January of this year or early February.
Are we ready to vote, or anybody have any further, further discussion? Commissioner Kramer?
I'm going to vote for this, but I'm hoping that we can have, in addition to this, some other supplemental governance training and also readdress the climate issue, because I think we did a poor job at, at pushing this through now. And I think we, we owe it to all of our employees to do better.
Thank you.
And I see this as a first step as well. And I see it as, yes, I already said what I was.
Okay, all those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved for two, and I voted for it going in advance that I was also going to support further, further work with MSU and other consultants.
Thank you.
Yes, first step.
We have just a notion here, a mention that we have a Committee of the Whole meeting on the 24th. You, anything to say? We've seen the agenda, I think.
I'm sorry, what's?
The agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting on January 24th. We have Michigan State University going to be here, and we have capital improvement and budget issue.
Correct.
And time is nine o'clock?
I don't know what time, though. I love that portion.
I think we said 9:30.
9:30, and I don't think we need a motion to approve that, do we?
I can put it by consensus.
Next on the agenda is the approval of our board rules, and we do have, Michelle provided us all.
No, I just said, did you want me at the table for this?
Yes, because I did ask our clerk to, to give us two mini lessons on issues that I thought related to the way we did business and are part of our board rules. And she's going to do that, and then we'll open it up, and hopefully we'll then get approval for a board rule. Michelle?
Well, just saying, if you were to shoot, you'd find. Well, I just gave you, so I don't need to call. Can I show this to Deb, the administrator, earlier? This is your copy of the rules of order and procedure that are under you. The chairman, and I do have another sheet I brought you, Robert's Rules Cheat Sheet, okay? I brought you one of those and called it to give to you. The chairman asked me to go over specifically fifty items with you. If you look in this packet I gave you, okay, and the rules of order and procedure, the page that you are looking at is about page 14, okay?
Is the cheat sheet in here, too?
No, I didn't give you the cheat sheet. I wanted to listen to.
Okay. Okay.
So, the three issues the chairman, can I stick tomorrow? No.
14.
The three issues the chairman asked me to speak about was point of order, call the question, and remote participation, because that came up. We're going to start with point of order. Your, and remember, I am not an attorney, so I don't want to keep saying that 10 times to you.
I want to.
Your rules of order that you adapt specifically do not address point of order. So therefore, you have to default to Robert's Rules of Order. Point of order is always procedural. You always can interrupt a speaker, and there is no second needed. The chair will determine the point of order. Point of orders from the audience do not count. The only ones up here are you. So a lot of times when I'm sitting here, and I want to tell you, you just voted on something, and there's no motion on the floor, I can't say point of order. I just have to wait till the chairman looks at me, and I can say, you just voted without a motion, okay? So you seven are the only ones that can call a point of order. Point of order, though, is not debatable, but it's used only when you are way too far off the topic. Now, if the chairman, which occurred tonight, makes a ruling on that, that ruling can be appealed, and there can be a motion with a second to appeal the decision. I wish to appeal the decision of the chair. It is seconded. It is not debatable. No, it's debatable, but not amendable. Someone cannot put amendment to that deal. And on those, on this particular one, it is a majority of those present, okay? It's a majority of those present that would make the rule. Because on some of our rules, it is a, it has to be of those elected. Some, some issues, like to call the question, it's a two-thirds of those serving, so it's a five, you go to move a call of question. So that's point of order. Now, to call the question, there is, I think I wrote this down wrong. And Deb might have two. To call the question is generally to stop debates, but you cannot interrupt a speaker to call the question. And to call the question is a motion and a second. But again, you cannot use it to interrupt the speaker. And that to pass takes five votes, okay? So I move to call the question. It's seconded. It goes right to the vote.
You must be recognized to call the question.
Yes, I must be. So it's really not best practices to go. I move to say the pens will be blue, second, call the question, because then you are going to guess what your other board rules call, for every commissioner will get a chance to speak to an issue, okay? So it is a way that you can limit debate, but again, it does take five. So if you only have five serving for five present, all five people need to pass it. It's just like, you know, the other day at Executive, we almost didn't count enough commissioners. We ended the meeting with only four, which is all we needed. Have one more commissioner. I already wouldn't have been able to recommend invoices. Okay? So that is that. That's the call of the question. Now, the other question that you had for me was about Zoom. First of all, I know where part of the question came from, and it's always been the position as commissioners that you do not offer legal advice to townships, and how townships and villages choose to proceed and conduct their meetings is not necessarily how we may do this, and vice versa. So, when a commissioner comes in on Zoom, because they are not going to attend at a meeting under the current, not COVID, okay, we're beyond COVID from that standpoint, they are coming in as a member of the public, okay? Not as a commissioner. So you need to be really careful, because the question becomes, do we allow that type of participation by the public to come in and participate? Now, there are counties that allow public input every time a motion is put on the floor. Now, the chair, in our rules, it does talk about where the chair can recognize someone from the public. I didn't highlight where that is. But where a commissioner is allowed to come in, and I'll, I'll say it, I'll say it all, and then you can make your own decisions, and that would be here next week. I talked to Attorney Stoker today, and Deb and I have had other conversations with him about some of those issues. The question becomes is, we know that Commissioner Kramer was unable to attend, and that's just what I'm going to use for reference.
Yeah, it was last week.
She was not here. She was able to participate in Zoom last week. She did not vote. She was marked absent in amendments, and she was marked absent in all of the votes that you took. But through that process, she cannot be allowed to deliberate. But the question becomes, again, I'm not an attorney, because, I don't know if there's other attorneys here, but, the question becomes, though, what is deliberation? And the case law that the attorneys are going to work from, the cases that really carry the whole state are from Lillina County for Open Meeting Act violations. And the Ryan versus Lillina County Board of Commissioners, and Ryan versus Cleveland County. And I do have those opinions here that I can share with you, because that's where deliberation goes outlined. So if we allow the general public to participate, we can. Now, it is okay when Chris Shear comes in and he presents to you, but this is different when you do, because that deliberation issue becomes huge. So when, when Commissioner Kramer was up there, she was not as a commissioner, she was a member of the public, which you don't necessarily allow, because we're not allowing people to Zoom in and holler. We're not allowing them to call anymore. You can change your rules to do that. You can amend your rules. It's a vote of the commissioners to allow public comment. It's addressed a little bit in these rules. Now, of course, none of you are in the military. That could be an. Now, of course, none of you are in the military, that could be an exception to participate.
Can I ask a?
I got that, sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So during COVID.
Correct.
And I know the rules were different. We could deliberate together, but I have not understood when it changed, if a commissioner is out of town, we usually let them engage in the discussion. So we could change our rules to allow that.
We could, and you have to go through legal, because when Commissioner Kramer was on the screen, she's viewed as a member of the public, not as a commissioner, and you don't allow your public to communicate with you in that way.
So I think we need to change that in our rules, because obviously, we all know we can't vote on Zoom.
But we do need to talk to our attorney about that.
But now, we can next one.
Yeah, we need to hold off.
Your rules do allow for, if you're in the military or COVID were to come back. Now, the Attorney General has ruled that the, there is, if you have a disability that is allowed for, under the Americans, which we have, that it is justifiable for participation for an ADA qualified event, to request an accommodation, to have to participate via Zoom, that would have to be presented prior to the meeting, okay, to the chair who could make that determination. So I ask specifically, in the case of COVID, and there is some leeway out there, because the flu wouldn't count, common cold wouldn't count, you're snowed in, you're stuck in your garage, none of that matters, you get a flat tire. There is some thought that COVID, because if you come here, you're running even a bigger risk of potentially exposing the entire room, that that could potentially, and I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no, I'm just repeating what attorney Stoker told me today, if you wanted to go that far. I think the best view of them from what I learned today is, if you can't make it, you just can't make it, and you're going to miss that discussion. But it doesn't stop you, as a commissioner, from putting your thoughts on a specific topic in writing to give to the rest of the board, it would become part of the public record. Now, your other thought is, you can allow more public input. Like I said, some counties do allow public input, recognized by the chair after every motion that goes to floor. I'm not, I'm not saying that's what you should do either, I'm just glad you, that's another opportunity. Those are the questions I was asked. I do have a legal opinions from the Ryan in the Leonard County case, and I do have Robert's Rules of Orders cheat sheets, as well as some others that I'm happy to share with anyone. I can try to answer a question, but if I don't know, I'll give you.
That's fine, I'm just curious. So what I'm wondering is, then if, so if we are able to attend via Zoom, would we still be able to attend via Zoom, would be the first thing? I mean, just attend, and then?
No.
No, so just straight up no? Not like attend, attend?
If you're in the military, what you would do, because you're a member of the public, and we're not letting, we haven't, since we were Zoom bombed, allowed the public to come in on Zoom, you could watch it like others do on YouTube.
Okay, so it would, you would be completely like outside of, so you couldn't make public comment then?
But it doesn't mean your rules can't be amended, but you have to think in terms of the public.
Sure. Gotcha.
Because everything in your rules right now talks about, when you look at, sorry, I should look at this one, it's under remote participation, that is all relative to off-site participation, it's page thirteen. There's several, there's several levels of it, but it talks about, I think it's thirteen. When it talks about off-site participation, it talks about the military, and then it talks if there's a change amendment to the open meetings act, like there were several during COVID.
Commissioner, I'll go.
Yeah, I'd like to put this on the agenda for February, that we amend our rules to allow commissioner discussion on Zoom, while understanding they cannot vote, but they can participate. So if somebody's out of town and they have valuable information on a topic, we've always done that. We've even done that.
We've done it all, we've done it all.
Well, we've done it even for the last year. Even, we didn't stop doing it after COVID.
Correct, but they haven't been able to vote.
No.
And.
But I think that's been valuable.
Attorney Stoker is willing to Zoom in and go over this, but you do need to think of it too, from a public perspective, of what are you willing to allow the public to do, because the commissioner that is absent is equal to a member of the public. And I, he can explain it much better than I can, but since it took over you, I can ask.
Thank you. And we can bring that back, but we certainly want to have legal opinion. Commissioner Rush?
I know it's so confusing, but I know when Commissioner Kramer was on there, we were calling you Commissioner Kramer, you know what I mean? So it's just, we do need. Not like normal person Kramer. No, so we do need total clarification on this, so that.
But she's not a commissioner, and she does that under the circle.
But we were calling her, so that, it was, yeah, but I'm just saying, we need to make that very clear, and.
Do not get what we do here confused with what villages and townships do. They have different attorneys, and you seek different legal advice.
Thank you for presenting that, and I ask Michelle to do that, because I want, I want you to, some of you do, know that the chair can always be overruled. And if the chair makes a decision, I made one last week, that was, was out of order. And when I watched the video, it's painful to watch it sometimes, but I went home and watched the video, and I should have been called out on, on that. And that was allowing a public comment at the beginning of the meeting that wasn't related to the agenda as, as posted. So I want you to make sure you understood that, that the chair can be called out, or we can call each other out in a polite way. And, and we also can call for a question, if we think everybody's had their voice and beginning to repeat themselves. We have, we have rules of order here, and I, could I, could I propose an addition? And, and we'll make the, our decision up, but I, Emmett County is about as conservative a county as we have. There are a couple more, and they have some Dems, and they have some Republicans on the board, and in the past, their meetings haven't always been civil. And they, as a commission, developed commissioner standards of behavior, and they made that part of their rules. And there's, there are only seven of them, and I'd like to read them, and then I'd like to see if there's a willingness to insert these as part of our rules of order. You want to talk before I read them?
Do you want to put this on next week's meeting, so that we can read them?
As long as we don't approve the board rules today.
It can be an amendment next week.
Oh, I'm not ready to do the board rules with the open meetings still needing to be clarified, so, otherwise, that would have to be amended also.
We really need board rules in place, and we don't have them in place.
So we can always amend, you're saying?
At your organizational meeting, you approved your twenty-four rules of order and procedure. They are already in place.
Okay.
The set that the administrator prepared in front of you, and we're making contact here, so we're not over speaking each other. There were two sections in there that are highlighted in yellow that were agreed upon by the board last week that you're only amending, because you last year amended your board rules three or four times. So you do have them in place tonight, it's just an amendment to what you did at organizational.
Willingness to put off until our, our February meeting, so that you can read these, and we can get a legal opinion on Zoom?
Sure. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would really, I think it's very important that if for some reason you cannot attend the meeting, but there is a topic that you have information and interest in, that you be able to participate in the discussion, understanding, which is what we've always done, understanding that we can't vote, that's always assumed. So if we can do that, I'd like to know from the attorney.
So the amendment that is proposed was based on board discussion at the last meeting, so it is on page sixteen. I don't think there would be anything that would preclude the board from moving forward with the amendment, because it speaks to the two different types of public comment, and how they're specifically handled. So if the board would so consider, there's the option to amend this now, and then we can have future amendments at the February meeting, correct?
And I think we all agree to this at our. Could I have a motion to approve the, the amendment on page sixteen that's highlighted that just speaks to three minutes and five minutes, and agenda specific for the executive committee?
Seconded.
Is that good enough, Michelle?
You're approving the amended, that motion was to approve the amended twenty-twenty-four rules of order and procedure, Leonard County Board of Commissioners specifically that.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, six-zero. Please look at this, and we got to own whatever it is, so maybe I've got the wrong seven things, but I think some discussion on what we agree on, how we want to work together, matters.
Thank you for doing that.
We now are down, Kathy, review of financials.
Thank you for receiving some late names today. I did put hard to ask.
You love it.
Just asking you a question, just refer to the upper right-hand corner, so I know which entities I'm looking at, since we're approving twenty-three invoices as well as twenty-four invoices.
Any questions? Commissioner Lotner?
I, I don't have any questions. I, I wanted to say thank you to Kathy, because when I got home today from work, it was after three, I believe, and, and began to diligently go through these, and Kathy had an answer for me right away. It's very interesting, I know all of you read it, but the, so we're doing some new canine training for our new officers, and it's going to be really fun to watch them move forward. But at first glance, I thought the meal was one day, but it was several days. So thank you for your explanations, and everything else looked in order.
Anything else? Commissioner Kramer?
Since we're giving Kathy kudos, thanks for telling me to get my expenses in this weekend while you were working, and I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
She never goes home? I don't think, I don't think so.
Anybody else? Thank you, Kathy. We now have committee reports, recommendations, and resolutions. Our special reports by staff, commissioners, or agencies. Commissioner Burke?
Yeah, the Traverse City Airport deal last, last few days, total passenger movement at Traverse City Airport, they had seven hundred thousand, but it was actually seven hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine people. And we have, again, eighteen, come spring, eighteen nonstop flights. So it's, it's going well.
Commissioner, I'll go.
The Brownfield Committee addresses some very interesting, interesting projects, but it's an opportunity in our county for our tax dollar to help renovate and restore older buildings. So, for instance, in Empire, there is an old schoolhouse, the original school in Empire, that is a really interesting building, and they always, there's always interesting paintings on it, and, but it just stands there. Someone has stepped forward and wants to renovate that, the original schoolhouse, which is pretty exciting for the, for the village of Empire. There is also going to be renovation at the end of Empire, there was a, there was an old hardware store there years ago, and the original livery from the lumbering days, they're going to keep the livery, they're going to restore it, and then they're going to take out those buildings that have been sitting there for fifteen years, and develop a little town center. So there are exciting things happening in our county, and people are working hard on projects to revitalize our villages.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Cracker?
No, not Commissioner.
Clerk Cracker.
It says special reports by staff, so.
Yes.
Can, may I do it from here?
You may.
I just wanted to give everyone an update and remind you, we will do our best for next month, but for the board and the public to be aware that next month, when we hold our Board of Commissioners meeting, we do plan to try to restore this room to look like this, but this will serve as the site for early voting, starting on Saturday, February seventeenth, through Sunday, February, February seventeenth through Sunday, the twenty-fifth, and then we'll have, not in this room, but a little bit more action on the night of the actual voting day of February twenty-seventh. I am very pleased with the people that have come forward. I can't, I actually have more people wanting to work than I have spaces during the early voting, so that's very good. The county election commission, which is the probate judge, the county treasurer, and myself, we will be meeting here shortly to make those appointments of the workers, as well as backups. We will also be placing in the newspaper with eighteen hours' notice of when we will be conducting a public accuracy test of the equipment that we will use for early voting, and that will probably be in this room, and the three of us, it's our plan to all be there. And the public is welcome to do that, but we're going to do our best to try to take this room down. I just, we'll just see how well we can do that to get the setup, otherwise, we might have to go downstairs, but if I can keep you in this room, I would like to, it's just a very quick, tight turnaround. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Last item on, the last staff report is from our administrator. We are due for our administrator evaluation. Our timeline was that she would present to us tonight her self-evaluation in written form, along with an instrument that you will complete and return. That should be returned to me by February one. I will pick it up at your house, or you can deliver it to my house, or you can mail it to me, but on February one, I am going to be sent, or February two, I'm going to be sending these all to Matt at, at Cole Stoker. He has agreed to compile them along with each individual report, and then we will bring those to the executive committee meeting in February. We will have administrative evaluation, the administrator can choose to do it in open session or closed session, but she can't choose whether or not she's here. She, she will be here. She spent, I know the, much of the time this weekend with her self-evaluation, and she has those to distribute tonight. So you'll, she will do that as, as, when we're adjourned. The form is the one that we approved way back in November to, according to that plan, you will return those to me. I will not write their final report, it will be Matt that writes the final report, and he has done these for lots of counties, and he will also provide the, the raw data and the instrument. I did ask him about commission signature. He didn't make a legal opinion, but he advised that they do, and that's his public, once it's presented to the administrator, that is public information. But I would ask that you sign and provide that in the, in the sealed envelope. I will not look at those until I get them at the time you get them back from Matt, but I will pick them up, and I will take responsibility for sending them in one envelope to the attorney. Want to say anything about that?
I think that covers it.
Okay. Thank you. We are now down, thank you for sticking through tonight. We're down to our second public comment. We'd be happy to hear from you. You have up to five minutes for the final comment. Just to ask you, as we always do, please address the Board of Commissioners, not individuals in the public. Thank you. Yes, John, our treasurer. Can I was asked to make sure that people in the public, if it's a staff person or an elected official speaking, to make sure that they know, so treasurer, John Gallagher?
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak and for you guys to listen. The letter that was drafted and presented tonight, in all good faith, was an attempt to move forward. Any belittling or dismantling of this doesn't come from a place to move forward, but only to continue to dig old sores. We have to move forward. I didn't have the courage or the articulation to write this and I was grateful that the judge did. I was happy to sign this, but for the disrespect to continue, it's a pause. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Renee. Ms. Wyler?
Renee Wyler, Lake Nemo. We're being told that we're disrespectful because we as taxpayers paid for a hit-up on some of our wonderful employees. And we have Melinda, I don't know how she can continue to stand up with all this coming at her, or the clerk, or the deputy clerk. They were put in the newspaper and they were named, they even put their photos in there and the, what do you guys call it, the little flag? I think that's what they're calling it now. No, we don't get to do that. And we, the people, get to know what's going on with that survey. We're not going to just move on like you'd like to do, Judge. We're not moving on.
Please, Detective Lord?
We need to make sure we know what was going on. This letter, oh, it just says, "Don't be disrespectful, just move on." After you've done this horrible thing, we've hit rock bottom here in Lilo County. Rock bottom, but that's good because now there's no place to go but up for us. And we're going to continue to watch what you're doing. Everyone is going to be looked at. And we're not going to allow our county to continue this. When we moved up here 15 years ago, my daughter was four years old and she used to tell people, her friends, "We live in paradise." Whenever they would ask her where she was from, "Well, she was from Cincinnati," but she said, "I live in paradise." We're not going to stop telling anymore. We're going to bring it back and make it what it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Autumn Moore, City Township. I just wanted to speak on that point of order. That was legal and should not have been... Or it was legal and shouldn't have been dismissed. It's an interrupter, doesn't have debate, isn't secondable and yeah, will cut off debate. So it shouldn't have been addressed and I believe that akin to talking out of turn, talking disrespectfully or using language that demeans people, should be considered like talking out of turn and can be or should be addressed by point of order. Yeah, I would just like to see some more professionalism. I mean, a point of order was made and should have been respected and yeah, the chairman was trying to do his job, but was told not to, especially when we're talking about standing in their lane. And the chairman's job is to address points of order and to deal with that. So just some more professionalism.
Thank you. Yes, Judge Kropkowski.
Yes. Judge Kropkowski, once again speaking. And let me see, we're all in this together. This letter said the board, office managers, department heads, some are elected, some are appointed. We're all in this together. However, other than Commissioner O'Rourke, I'm not sure that... Well, I could be wrong, but I doubt that any of you really know the names of everyone in my staff. The department heads and the elected officials, office folks, we know our staff. And I think the first step in reconciling whatever the problem is here is really for department heads, elected officials in their own offices to make sure that our staff is respected, is listened to, that we have a give and take and that if there are problems, that hopefully the employee would come to me first, either question what I'm doing or tell me about some other employee and department head tries to handle it. If the complaint by an employee comes to me and it's about some other elected official outside of my office, you know, I guess my option would be to go to that elected official and say, "I'm here in this, but..." And that's not real comfortable to do, but we're all in this together. And to say that the department heads who wrote this letter and Jennifer Grant gave me permission to sign her name because she's on vacation, but I talked to her via email, for us to be told that we're out of our lane for writing a letter like this is not accurate. We are not telling what to do. We didn't give you our ideas as to what might work. And you have to vote the way you vote, but the department heads and the office folks know more about what's going on in this building than respectfully than you do. And I just want to say that other than Jen, Wiki and I, I don't think any else in the room was at the, used to be called department meeting, now it's called leadership. We were at that meeting and even assuming that Ms. Allen took a poll, there's nothing illegal or inappropriate about taking a poll at a department head leadership meeting. There was a discussion. The consensus was, and I said, "Is there consensus about..." We all love Chet Janet, but is there a consensus that we'd rather have some neutral person? And people were shaking their heads, but no one voiced anything. So she said, "Okay, who is... Who wishes to have Chet?" No one raised their hand and Jen was after her. She said, "I can go either way." There's nothing wrong with that. And we asked her to relay our comments to Ty or to the board. That was our concern. It's up to you to choose. If you're choosing Chet, that's fine. That's great. I do a great job. That was just our thought. And for her being, for Ms. Allen's being blasted by a member of the public and some of the commissioners for her contacting that meeting, is this really inappropriate? We talked about knowing both sides of the situation. I was there. We can do, we can vote at those meetings. You can choose to not say a single thing. We can vote and we ask that our thoughts be communicated to you, that we're like any other public citizen, we're entitled to give our point of view. And if you wish to shut out key office managers and department heads, you're never going to solve the problems in this county. Because we are on the, Ms. Cocker and I and John Gallagher, we're on the front line with our employees and if we treat them poorly, they're going to be unhappy. So the bosses need to get their act together and make sure that, you know, we have a good workforce, transparency, respect, civil discourse, not name-calling, not calling someone a liar. You know, you just don't do that in terms of a way to garner support and trust and cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Yes, sir.
Hadn't planned on doing this. I was sitting and listening to the banter about the survey and by the way, I'm Steve Postich, I'm resident of Lilo County and Cedar is my hometown. So I'm listening to the banter about the survey and of course, I had seen the article in the paper and I had heard about the request for raw data to support the survey. And then listening to you folks, it's amazing that you're going to move forward with a survey that's not credible, that has bad information. And it was noted by one of your members, right? So why would you move forward with something that you know is bad information? You're giving credibility to it. And also, you spent $6,500 on something that has no value from what I've heard and that's not a good use of our resources. Why would that be right? And also, there's no remorse from some of the members about your colleagues that are getting dragged through the mud in the paper, the pictures in the paper and everything else. I mean, this is not professional. This is not the way that things should be done. So I'm really, this is my second meeting. I want to get more involved in the county. The lack of teamwork, the interruption of each other, the unprofessional way that you do, that you bully and push things through, I don't... I hope to see some change and improvement. And that's what I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Carrie.
Carrie Onan, Centerville Township. Well, I wasn't expecting to come up yet either, but I have to follow that gentleman. I agree with everything he just said and he said it well. I've been thinking about the term respect. It's a super important word. I'd rather be respected. I've worked most of the times. It's really important to a lot of us and I hear all of you use the term respect a great deal and of course, we don't disagree. I... We don't disagree. We do expect you to consistently keep that same degree of concern for respect for your constituents. We hear a lot about respecting the employees and we agree completely. That's so important. There's no, there doesn't need to be a finite amount of respect, of course. Specifically, we're looking to hear you equally focused on showing respect for your taxpaying constituents as we are the ones that elect you and financially keep our county government running. So one of the points just brought up, the $6,500. That, to push that aside and say, "Hey, you just got to move on," is so disrespectful to those of us that vote for. So that's the kind of disrespect we're feeling back here and we'd like to see that changed. We love that you want to respect everybody in the village. It's so important. And we must re-expect really to see you showing that level of respect in how you discuss these things. We want to hear all of you. We hear consistently from some of you that you respect our concerns. We want to hear it from all of you. I think that's it. Oh, actually, the Judge Kropkowski's letter. Since you all referred to that one a great deal as much as you did tonight, please tell us where we can access a copy of that letter if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Bill.
Bill Lisa, Elma Township. Got to sign some of these. Just back to the handout that I spoke about in the first three minutes. This one that I gave you, it comes from the movie Let My People Go, that movie. Let My People Go, that movie. It's $10 to download. Some of you said, "You listen to everything we say." If you want to find out a whole lot about election fraud, go to this website, letmypeoplego. That movie. And for $10, you can have it on your computer in five minutes and just click on it. It's two hours and 17 minutes. All the clerks, ward leaders, leaders in this county should see this movie. It disproves all the assertions of election machine security. They're not secure, as shared in this example, 49.9, 50.1, 90 times in a row. That comes from an algorithm. And what is the alternative? It's no losing on this alternative. It happened, this is from a Signal message earlier today. I don't know if anyone shared it before I got here, but it's, "The political party picked to finish last. The political party, the Chinese Communist Party, worked hard to defeat the political party that represented the people and democracy won. Despite the Chinese Communist interference, despite the predictions and despite the pressure, the People's Party in Taiwan won the national elections. They did it in one way and one way only. 23 paper ballots. They had 23.5 million paper ballots, no machines. 23.5 million paper ballots, no internet connections. 23.5 million paper ballots, no foreign interference. 23.5 million paper ballots, all hand counted on election day. Paper ballots are how you win elections. You win even if you lose. I wouldn't mind if I went on to other things if I knew it was legitimate, but a black box voting machine with all the evidence showing they're not there, it was selections rather than elections. So we all win if we know what's on us. Now, paper ballots are how we restore election integrity and paper ballots are how we maintain our republic. We're going to lose the republic if we don't win on this issue. Paper ballots are how we, the people, win, all of us. And here are some examples. This is winning right here. This is from fingerprintsoffraud.com. There's rolling or shaking or tossing a coin 4,000 times, it levels out. That's fair. This is a fair election where the election starts, it's a little jagged at the beginning, but you're averaging the mail-in ballots and they're all centered within that tone. And this is... This is an unfair, fingerprintsoffraud.com, you can see all these, unfair election. It starts, in this case, heavily Biden at the beginning of the mail-in ballots. It shouldn't happen that way. It should all be within that tone. And then it follows the PID controller, like a cruise control, and goes to the set point that it wants. And here's the results. In Mesa County, Colorado, the first part of it you see was just Trump won by a little bit. The second part was where it should have been and the third part is the average then. So you can see the votes were diminished, in this case for Trump. We don't want them diminished for anybody. And here's the results of like 20 counties, all of them showing the same pattern. So... And the other thing is this handout, summary of election fraud in a 2020 presidential election in swing states. You can Google that. You might have a little trouble. Go to DuckDuckGo and it shows all the swing states, all the fraud. Please consider these. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comment? Mr. Robbins?
Rick Roberts, Elma Township. I guess we need to play the rewind button here for what's happened the last couple of weeks. And everybody else needs to look at themselves like when they were home, or us in the public, everybody. Have we learned anything in the last two weeks? Are we moving forward? We're still fighting. Why? Why aren't we talking about some of the good things that people want to have? I'm going to speak out of turn. Maybe I'll get in trouble, but no one talked. Well, we did, but we mentioned that new lady that's our executive assistant. Now, we have an HR director starting tomorrow. We got a finance clerk starting here in a couple of weeks, from what I've been told. That's all good news, but we didn't hear any of that. We're moving forward. There's two words that we should be looking at, focus and focus. Stay focused on the 3.8. That's what that survey is all about. It's not about a few women got their bacon fried. I'm sorry if I did. I wasn't part of the survey, but it's what it is. I wasn't part of the survey, but it's what it is. Move forward from it. You know? You're diverting into the issue here. The issue is the employees. Look at the employees the other day, from what I've heard tonight. They went to their staff meeting, or whatever you wanna call it. They talked. That was the employees. That's what you've been all saying, we need to listen to the employees. They spoke that day. This is our liaison to you guys. She came back and relayed the information. She's not trying to stir the pot. She's relaying to help you people, so we can all move forward. And that's what we gotta focus on. And the hope is, my second word is, we hopefully, we are moving forward. I think it says a lot that we lost our HR director like less than a week ago, and we've already replaced it. We've replaced this position. We've replaced people. You know, I think there's hope here. You know, we painted a dark picture that no one's not gonna want to work here. Well, they are coming here, and we gotta provide them the tools and the needs to do the job here and move forward as a board, and as, as us as a community. I mean, we can do it, but we gotta stop fighting. I mean, I just, I don't know when it, when it's gonna end, let's, you know, a couple of years. I know I gotta address you guys, the whole board here, but you know who it is. You know? Coming in here every meeting, just stirring the pot, isn't solving anything. You know? I mean, if you really look at it, that article that came out of Leonel Enterprises, it talks about a few people. Well, from what I saw tonight, that one person, the commissioner, proved that, proved that article right. I mean, you know, it came out of the survey. She's just supporting every meeting she has.
Please, please, thank you. Any other public comment? We do appreciate you coming, and we, we appreciate your interest. Thank you. Commissioner, comment? Mr. Ross?
Yes, I'd just like to say again, my phone number, my email, is on the county website. And if you wanna photograph me, or video me, or while we're just sitting around talking, that would be great, but they're obviously leaving now, so they don't hear me. Please, if you have a problem or a concern that something could be done better, reach out to us. We ask you that every single time. Please. I'm happy to hear it in public comment, but I think we'll be a lot more productive if we can sit down and listen to each other and talk about how we can make things better, not just accuse of wrongdoing, 'cause that's incorrect. Thank you.
Commissioner, Rick?
From the survey, it was outlined that we definitely need to separate finance from Jen and Michelle's office. We need Jen and Michelle to reconcile the books. So, what I'm suggesting is that we go out and we hire an experienced finance director and move the wage up to 100, 120, just like in Traverse City. That would, I don't think Jen is enjoying this, and I know Michelle is not enjoying it, and I'm a little bit tired of it. So, let's just go out and find the experienced finance director, put an ad for it, and get it done. The second thing, Ms. Allen, I've worked with Ms. Allen, Deb, for two years at Elmwood Township Board. Very fine board member, always add to things to it. When you do her evaluation, put yourself in her shoes. How many people have left? First, you get to know people, and then you've got to interview. For this board to micromanage her, let her make mistakes, and we can tell her she made mistakes, but do not micromanage. If you want to come in here every day and sit in her office and, and do her job, well, damn well do it, okay? But when you do the survey, think about what she has been through in the last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Aguirre.
I too encourage anyone, anytime, to contact us. We do need to hear from people. You know, it's strange, being a commissioner, you run to represent your district, and then we spend all our time in this room, in meeting after meeting after meeting. And we're representing all of you, but it's almost strange, 'cause you, you don't get much chance to hang out in your district. So, we do need and want to hear from the people we represent, absolutely. And our department heads and our employees are critical to our moving forward, and we all have to move together, work together. I have no idea what steps we're gonna take, but I know that, I appreciate what we have heard. I also want to commend our interim finance director. We do have a finance department. This has been a long, slow process. We are, she is in the process of hiring more clerks. We do have a finance department. And I'm really curious why we keep hearing that we don't. And maybe we need to figure that out. We do have Michelle and Jen assisting right now, because while we go through this transition, we do have to pass audits. We do have to take care of every single dollar of your taxes. We have to be stewards of your money. We want to pay people. So, thank you, Catherine Hartsfeld, or was it Kathy, for your work as we make this transition. Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen.
And Jen and Michelle.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner, Kramer?
Thanks, Ty. First, I'd like to come right back to Judge Kromkowski. I would like to hear from the department heads. I would like to hear from the people who are on the ground and making those choices. My comment wasn't directed towards you. It was directed more into the idea that I, I'm feeling circumvented a lot of times in these choices, these decisions, these conversations. That's what that was about. I am super happy, and I know that this was in, in the spirit of moving things forward and, and communicating with us, and I appreciate those comments, and I appreciate this letter. And we just need to paint a whole picture, and that's really difficult for us, for me, at this position. We're, I'm new, I've been here for a year. It's really hard to get at the meat and potatoes of everything. So, all the information, all of the data that we can use to do that, I appreciate. So, thank you. I would also say to the Kathy comment and, and other internal candidates who have applied for positions, part of the reason that I feel that there's maybe some toxicity happening in this building is that people are being passed up for positions internally that they shouldn't be. As human beings, we all want to move forward in life. We all want the opportunity to prove ourselves, I think, hopefully, and move up to that next level. When someone is working here in the building, I think we should supply them with those opportunities first and foremost, especially when they have been doing that job or have a history that proves that they could actually do and function in those positions. I think that's a healthy way to, to govern and to, and to, you know, move people forward. I also think that we, as commissioners, do get caught up sometimes on the numbers and looking at a spreadsheet and things in, in front of us, and we don't realize that behind every choice that we make, you know, we're affecting someone's life. And I've been spending a lot of time really thinking about how we are playing a role in, in the toxicity. I don't know if it's inherent in government, and this is, this is just the way it functions, that, you know, all of you and everyone who works here gets, you know, seven yahoos who have no idea what to do, and we're learning as we go. And that's problematic for a lot of people. So, I don't know how we can move this forward and function, but I think the biggest part is a self-realization of where we sit, and trying to remove our egos aside and realize that this building functioned perfectly fine before we got here, and will continue to function probably perfectly fine after we leave. And we are temporary in these seats. And so, I'm hoping that I can, you know, do as much for, for all of you and, and this building as I can. I don't, I still don't understand what that is. For me, right now, it's gathering all the data. So, I hope, yeah, I, I, there's no clear path, but each, each day, we'll try to make a step forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Lautner?
Yes, thank you. You know, I hardly know where to begin. I, I think, Gwen, that you said very eloquently what is going on with finances right now. So, we, we've heard a lot tonight about communication, and I would encourage anyone to, to communicate with our finance department, and let them tell you about the cleanup on aisle four that they've been through this last year. It is impressive, and, and I, I can't even begin to tell you the problems that those three ladies have, have taken care of and done for this county, as I believe mentioned, with the audits, W2s, claims and accounts, payroll. It's very, very complicated, and it was messed up. And those who did it know who they are, and, and are responsible for, for that. So, what is very difficult is to watch this board imploding. It has been really incredible, because I had never worked with a board of commissioners like this one. And where is healthy debate? It used to be healthy debate. Now, what happens when someone here does not want to hear what someone has to say? We quit calling the question. We quit calling, or we interrupt. So, I, you know, I do think that there was a comment made out there that there shouldn't be the interrupting. I agree 100%. There should not be that interrupting. It's been allowed. It's gotten out of hand. It's been, it's been a show for the last year. We heard about micromanaging, and yet, everyone seems to be running around trying to micromanage everyone else. That is not disrespectful. That's the truth. So, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe people don't want to hear it. Maybe they like to just call out names, but not hear them themselves, that they're a part of the implosion going on in, in the county. Yeah, communication, but boy, we don't want to communicate if it's not what we want to hear. Respect, but yet, we don't want to respect all of our employees and hear what all of our employees had to say. I find that just, I find it disturbing. Are we, I do not think anybody was elected to come up here and all sing kumbaya, all hold hands, and all vote the same way. That is not what the people of this county need. What the people of this county need is for us to do our job, keep an eye on the money, pay the bills, and, and just allow us to do our job. I don't run up and down every office in this courthouse and, and get to know all the employees one-on-one. That's not my job. Now, we go to the table and negotiate with our employees, and we've negotiated a really healthy benefit package. I know they don't want to hear how good it is, but it's very good. Anybody can look into that. Our wages are very good. That, that's what negotiations are for. They've been successful. We've been successful. The county's been successful because of it. So, yeah, let's, let's all keep all those things in mind that we've heard tonight. I think it's all very healthy. I think it's all very good. I will echo that. It's, it's yeoman's work. Kathy, thank you very much. I, this is, for the first time in months, that, it's first time now that we've got finances back under control, that I feel really, really very peaceful about where we are again with the finances of the county. It's a hard-fought battle, and, and the public has no idea. I mean, the general public, maybe that's good. But as I said earlier, ask. Ask the question. But set aside half hour, 40 minutes to hear about it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Kathy. And your, your, the help from, from Michelle and Jen. I don't disagree with a lot of what I heard. I disagree with some of it, but not a lot of what I heard. But I, I have a book that I always gave my teachers in my building, and it was, "The Students Are Watching." And I think, and I, I wanted them to read it, because I wanted them to know that how they behaved as teachers was how the students were going to behave. And I think we've heard about our challenges. I think we all need to work harder at it. I hope you'll give some consideration to those standards. But I want to make one strong statement. I expect the administrator to share with me and share with you if she knows of staff concerns. That's one of her roles, and we need to hear from her. And we need to hear from elected officials if they have concerns. So, I don't, I don't, I don't want the message that it's not the administrator's role to share with us if she picks up something from staff. I expect her to do it. That's all for me. Thanks.
We now are at approval of financials.
Yes, so I would move to approve fiscal year 2024 fund transfer number 24-001.
Support.
Thank you. Are there any questions about it? They're very straightforward. Did I, did everybody understand it?
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just about, I appreciate comments. Your folks are in good order. It has been a job. But the, I think knowledge is power, and I think that people do need to understand that finance, no matter who is in that position, still has to work closely with the clerk's office and the treasurer's office as well as you, because what I do for you is apply all of your policies, the terms of your contracts, and that makes me a very unpopular person, because there are people on this campus that don't want to be held to your policies and your contracts. But that's what you pay me for. So, is it a lonely job? Yes. This can't be done. Also... You do not want finance to operate in a vacuum. It is dangerous to allow finance to operate in a vacuum. You have to have checks and balances. You have to have my work verified. You have to have your finance director verify my work. My work, I verify clerk's work. You do not want this department in a vacuum. And so, the abuse that the people who have been training me, but now they're verifying my work. Reconciliation implies that I'm doing something wrong. I am not. I give my work to these two, and John as well. They have to sit in law and say, "It's been looked at by another set of eyes." I can have a fat finger moment and do a keystroke that'll, you know, just make more work. And that's not what we do. And that's not what we do. This is exhausting. It's called appreciation.
This is, we're, we're here to approve the, I, 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 I understand what you're saying, but, but we need to approve the amendment. I think we have a motion on the floor.
You, you voted on it already?
Did we vote on it? Okay. I, I think, and we're going to talk about this more at our workshop next, next week. But I, I, we hear you and we appreciate you.
I, I, I'm uncomfortable not letting her finish.
Yeah, me too.
Go ahead.
Every document that goes through finance has to be verified. It, we have data entry stamps. We have data verified stamps. If we don't have those stamps with multiple signatures on them and the auditors do a random sampling, it's a finding. I can't do this work without someone. A finance director wouldn't allow any work to go through the office without it being verified before it goes to the general ledger. So if people are coming, how many times I run up and down the hall and I hit three miles on my phone for walking, it's because I've found for signatures. Your checks are signed by two people, the clerk and the treasurer. It doesn't matter if it's Michelle or John. It's your clerk and your treasurer. They're all double signatures. I'm just, I just think that people that are critical don't have a clue what we do to protect the finances of this county and to provide the county with good audits so that when those documents are sampled and they're random, we can't predict what they're going to pull. They pull random payroll timesheets. They pull random journal entries, random bills, checks, invoices, and they've all got to have all these things. That erupts a finding. And I think my journal entry books, this is typical probably. Probably have 10,000 journal entries this year. And they're all verified and signed. And so, you know, you don't want finance in a vacuum and come out from signatures because you're just asking for trouble.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, they, they, they wanted to hear from you. Toughest job of the chair is to keep us on the agenda. Any other motions?
I would move to pay claims and accounts $263,435.24.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
I moved to approve post audit $2,119,472.68.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
I always look forward to Melinda's last three motions. Thank you.
Should do them first.
We are adjourned.